...than 5:00 PM, but it's closed at 4:00. So could we look at changing that just to make sure it's accurate? I had a citizen ask me that, so.
It's a great question. Thank you.
Yep.
My appointment note only.
You got the wastebasket again?
We'll be starting one minute over here.
What are they doing?
I'll just leave right here.
There you go. Have to destroy all evidence.
The Wednesday, April 10th, 2020, 2024 Planning Commission meeting for the City of Pickwa is called to order. We will be following a modified Robert Rules of Order during the commission as we address each resolution. We'll ask for the city staff to read the resolution, make a recommendation, and then the city, the planning commissioners will discuss the resolution with the city staff. This will be followed by if the applicant is present, the applicant come forward and provide any information they may have to the planning commission. Then there'll be a discussion among the commissioners. We will then have a motion and a second, and then we'll vote on it. In order for a resolution to pass, it requires three affirmative votes. Now, interestingly enough, in today's Planning Commission, we have six resolutions. The first two resolutions are appealable only to the courts. And the remaining four resolutions are recommendations to the city commission or we're appointing a planning commissioner to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is an action internal in a manner of speaking to the planning commission. The reason I mention this is on the first two resolutions, we'll ask you to come forward to the podium. And because it's appealable to the courts, I will do a quick, "Do you hereby swear affirm your testimony will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?" That that time say, "I do," or you don't, but if, indicate how you feel about that. Then state your name, your address, and then go forward. For the other four resolutions, you may, you'll approach the podium, state your name and address, and provide the information to the planning commission. At this time, could you call the roll?
Mr. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Sees?
Here.
Mr. Koenig?
Here.
Mr. Bup?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the meeting minutes of March 12th, 2024. I think we've all had an opportunity to read the minutes, and there has been a comment, I understand, a couple of comments. Are there any further additions, deletions, edits in regards to the meeting minutes for March 12th, 2024? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 12th, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second on the meeting minutes of March 12th, 2024. All in favor approving the minutes, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. There is no old business. Now we'll move to new business, Resolution Number PC 4-24. Could you read the, provide staff report and recommendation?
Okay, do you want me to redo the resolution?
Yeah, I'll table it.
Oh, we gotta untable it?
Table it right now.
Okay, let's make them, you make a motion to untable it?
Resolution 4-24.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of untabling Resolution Number PC 04-24, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is untabled. At this time, could you read the resolution?
The Resolution 4-24 stated that a resolution to approve a mural in the downtown zoning district at 212 North Main Street. And moving into staff report, if you recall, this was brought before you last month as being that the downtown review district had been empowered to you with the new zoning. So they were bringing the submission to you. Following your meeting, they went to BZA to discuss the size. If you recall, the size was 37 feet tall by 75 feet wide on the Park National Building, right there at 212 North Main. They received unanimous approval there. However, prior to that, a, I believe, a comment was made by Mr. Wright concerning how active has the Mills Brothers been involved in the design. From that, the committee went to the Mills Brothers, I believe, and Belle Fountain, right? Went to Belle Fountain and talked to them, and they had made a comment regarding where is Uncle Johnny? Did I get that right? Good. Alright, so they came back and the resubmission that is in your packet still covers the same size. But basically, it's a rework per your comments, and that's what's being brought off the table then today.
And the recommendations?
Recommendations for approval, same as before.
Any questions from the commissioners?
What was the change or what was the alteration?
They added, there was, if you look at the, the Mills Brothers was a quartet, and the father was in the quartet later when they had their major, you know, their major hits. And the original mural only had a quartet with the father. Now, all four brothers are in it and the father. So it's, it's a quartet, but it has the actual members of the Mills Brothers in singing. Over time. Is that correct?
Yeah, so if, it's a little bit oversized for emphasis in your packet, just to make sure that you see it. But yeah, the previous one, you know, as was stated, had four. This one includes the, I believe, late member added back into it.
Okay. Is any other discussion? Is the applicant present?
Good evening. My name is Ruth Coon.
Let me swear you in first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you swear or affirm the your testimony will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If so, please state your name and address.
It's Ruth Coon. I live on Park Avenue. I'm here representing the committee, which consists of Lorna Swisher, Main Street Pickwa, and Beautification Committee. We originally had the three brothers, that is, Don, Harry, and Herbert, and the father, John Senior. When we went to Belle Fountain to meet with the grand niece of the Mills Brothers, there were three sisters and four boys. One of the sisters was Dorothea, and she had a child named Joyce. And this is Joyce's daughter, Kim, that we met with. So it would be her grandmother was a sister to the Mills Brothers. And when she saw the original image, she made the comment, "Where is Johnny?", which means the fourth Mills brother. He died when he was 25 in 1936. But the four boys all were raised in Pickwa, born in Pickwa, attended Spring Street School, and attended church here. Their father joined the group in 1935 after the death of John Junior. And they went on then until 1957 with father. That was the original image, was the three brothers. It's Don, Harry, Herbert, and John Senior. So what we have done now, we have included John Junior as the four Mills Brothers and the father.
Any questions of Mrs. Coon? I, the only thing I'm struggling with, I, I think the mural's fine. The Secretary of the Interior's treatment guidelines for preservation and rehabilitation does not recommend applying paint to masonry that has been historically unpainted or uncoated. I briefly discussed masonry and painting in the last meeting. I, it's, in the guidelines, it's not recommended. I think the, was there ever any idea? I understand you plan to apply the, the paint directly to the masonry. And there are other substrates that you could use and attach to the wall. That wall's never been painted. So what, what's your comment on that?
My comment is that Bryan Brothers will be doing a clear coat, clear coat preparation over the brick facade. Then the mural will be applied. And, excuse me, Mr. Koenig, but what does the Department of Interior have to do with this?
The, the certificate of appropriateness in a historical district has been used as our guideline for what are the standards. For instance, the Secretary of the Interior standards and recommendations apply to all historic, in the historic register like Pickwa Caldwell District. The city adopted as their guidelines those standards, and that's the whole purpose of certificates of appropriateness. Is it appropriate for the preservation? Do we, we can't just, in my view, just come up with our own ideas. We adopted the Secretary of the Interior's recommendations. So they do not recommend applications of paint on unpainted, previously unpainted historical structures. So that's, that's my point. Now, you can have other substrates besides the clear coat that could be attached and further protect the, the envelope, the building envelope, which is what we're trying to do to historical structures. The mural and the content, wonderful. It's the actual way you're proposing to do it. I'm only one person on the commission. I don't know if it's going to carry. But in my personal, in my opinion, we would have a responsibility to look at the preservation standards.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yeah.
Check here just a second. I think by adding that clear coat before you put the paint on, that would enable, if someday somebody wants to remove that paint, that the brick would still be protected. You know, the, the original unpainted brick would be there. So I'm not sure that, I think, in keeping with Secretary of Tier Standards, that this would do that. I know what you're saying by a separate substrate, that would do it as well.
That would do it as well, yeah.
But I think this would be, this is a non-
You're saying the application of the clear coat-
Would protect-
Protect the original paint masonry so that if it was, be removed in the future.
And the brick would be back to restored as original.
And not affect the preservation of that wall? That's interesting.
We did have the professional company Midwest Maintenance look at the building, and we had Bryan Brothers look at it also. They are the ones who came up with the recommendation of the clear coat. I will also say to you, if I could call you Gary, you know, we do already have a mural in downtown Pickwa.
I don't think it's applied directly to the masonry. There, there's actually a, a substrate between the masonry and that. And it's, it's a wonderful mural also. I mean, the con, it's great. It's wonderful. But they did not apply it directly to the masonry. So this would be, we would, but I would defer to Commissioner Bup on that. Because of his background, I'll defer to his recommendation.
Are to be able to not make it unrestorable.
That's clearly what they're, and not impact that at all on the envelope.
That would do that. By clear coating that, that wall, I'd clear coat the whole thing for protection of the brick itself, whatever they're going to use. Then, then the paint would really not be applied directly to the brick. It'd be applied to that clear coat, and that could easily be taken off. Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners?
If, if I could just add, not to speak over Ruth, but this was a consideration. It was discussed whether, you know, the best application of doing the mural, whether that was a vinyl wrap or something of that nature. And, and the desire was to be painted. And upon wanting to do that, they inquired is the best way to do it. And they had made the report that, you know, the building has been tucked. It's, it's been preserved. It was in excellent shape. But they came up with, and I want to, I want to say, it was a quote of something like $12,000 to prep the building for the mural to be applied and therefore to protect the brick. So I, I can't say exactly how that went, but that was a comment that we had in the last meeting. So it wa, it was being prepped for it. It wasn't just going to be applied directly to the brick.
Excellent. Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Mrs. Coon.
Thank you very much.
Ruth, thank you. Anyone else that would like to come forward in, in regards to Resolution Number PC 4-24? Any further discussion? Have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution PC 4-24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve PC 4-24.
I'm sorry, who is the second? Thank you.
Eddie Harvey. Where is Main Street Pickwa is requesting a certificate appropriateness for a mural at 212 North Main Street. And the City of Pickwa Code, Section 4.7.10, provides the procedure for issuing a certificate of appropriateness within the downtown historic district. And the Planning Commission has studied the request, conducted a public hearing on the matter, and has established as fact that the proposed mural preserves distinctive stylistic features and examples of skilled craftsmanship of historic buildings and other historic assets, achieves the high design quality sought within the downtown historic district, is compatible with the general economic development policies of the city, will not threaten the general health, safety, and welfare of the public or properties affected, and conform to all other applicable plans, policies, and regulations of the city. This time, could you poll the commissioners?
Harvey?
Aye.
Wright?
Yes.
Koenig? Koenig, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Bup?
Aye.
Sees?
Aye.
Resolution Number PC 4-24 is approved. Now let's move on to Resolution Number PC 7-24.
A resolution requesting a special use authorization to allow hotel to be built at 902 Scott Drive. And for a staff report, if you recall, this is one, originally it was brought in. I, I don't remember the exact reasoning as to why we brought it to Planning Commission before. It was a, it hasn't been to Planning Commission at all. I'm sorry. So this is going to be the first time you're seeing this. This is something, this is the Red Roof Inn site, where we are looking at raising the building and constructing a development that has a higher-class hotel, a sit-down restaurant, and a, and a quick-serve restaurant, all available on your map that you can see. This has previously went to, this has previously went to BZA last month. They had a few variances that they had to work through to ensure that the development could take place. And staff recommendation on this, I remember what it was. We came to Planning Commission to talk about changing our zoning for hotels to go to special use was the first time. This was basically the reasoning and why that was brought before you in establishing the, the different tiers hotels. So staff recommendation on this is to approve the special use. And for specific details, I know the applicant's here to speak on their behalf.
Any discussion from the commissioners? Hearing none. Is the applicant present? Please come forward. Do you swear or affirm your testimony will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Ashish Patel, 3180 Port Clinton Road, Fremont, Ohio. I'm here with Bouchardas Lodging, and we are planning to put a 96 to 99 room Hampton Inn and Suites by Hilton, along with a developer who is putting in a sit-down restaurant as well as a fast-service restaurant. I don't know if you need to know more about the Hampton Inns, but I had a slideshow on what the building would look like. It's going to be a four-story. And I had the lobby and the lobby area. Some suites. Two bedrooms as well as king bedrooms. We, we will also have a fitness room and a swimming pool. But I don't have the pictures for that.
Great. Any questions from the city commissioner of Mr. Patel? Do you have any more information you'd like to share?
Do you have an idea how, how many jobs that'll create for the city?
I would say about 25, 30 full-time. But so it says hotels pretty much summertime is so-called seasonal, like where you see more turnover and more employment too. But otherwise, overall, it would, so over a year, I would say, yes, 25 to 30 full-time jobs.
It seems ideally situated right there on the interstate at the exit.
Yes.
Exit 82. And, yeah, I, I just think the, the, the idea of a special use for, of a hotel at this location, I'm trying to think of any, you know, it seems just a positive initiative. Any other comments?
What timeframe do you have for this?
I would say about six to eight months to start. So sometime this year, we would love to get started. But it's, we are working along with the developer who has to get moving ahead of us. So since, once he gets moving, we should be able to just be after him. So I would say about six to nine months.
Any idea on what restaurants possibly?
I think it's an Olive, wait, Chris?
Yep.
Yeah, it's an Olive Garden.
What about like the smaller one?
Chipotle. So basically, when it was submitted to BZA, it was applied for as hotel. Chipotle was the fast-serve, and then Olive Garden was the sit-down restaurant.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else present want to come forward and speak for or against Resolution Number PC 7-24? Do you?
I do.
Swear or affirm your testimony will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Christiane Zing, Community and Economic Development Director, City of Pickwa.
Okay.
This building. I just want to add a few comments. And, and obviously, we've been working very closely with Mr. Patel and his partners on the hotel piece of the project, along with the development group who's orchestrating the development of the entire four-acre site. And it's, it's been a, a major effort to be able to get all the ducks in a row, if you will, and to be able to produce the outcome that we're aiming for. We're not quite there, but if everything falls in line here and the entitlements come together and the developers' finances and pro forma will shake out as planned, we could end up with a very positive outcome to a set of circumstances that right now are less than desirable. So here in the very near future, we're going to be advertising for bids to demolish the existing structure that's condemned. And that'll be on the ground, so that'll pave the way for the developer then to move in and do the site work necessary, the grading, the storm pipe, the sewer, the water main, curbs and pavement to ready the pads for the hotel developer, and then also for the, the two lease entities, the one being the Olive Garden, who is also under lease, and Chipotle, who has signed a letter of intent. So all systems are go, but with any development project, there's always one more hurdle to clear. So I'm not here to make promises, but I'm, I'm telling you, it looks very positive. And a big part of that process or an important step in that process is to secure the necessary entitlements. To Mr. Wright's comment, we actually, when this site became, it was apparent it was going to be available for redevelopment, we started looking at what could be the, you know, potential end-users of that site. And the development community would tell you, you know, every other day, you, you read it in the newspaper, that, hey, we can get you sheets, we can get you Wawa, we can get you any of these fuel plazas, which quite honestly, from a community perspective and the gateway to your community, isn't really all that exciting. They pay a premium, so for developers, it's pretty exciting. But from a community amenities perspective and what does Pickwa really need, wasn't really all that exciting at all. So we did an economic impact analysis, partnered with Baker-Tillane Associates to put that together. And they were able to inform us with some data that basically told us that the economic impact year-over-year would be about $2.7 million with a fuel plaza and a convenience store, whereas it will be about $18.6 million with a hotel and two restaurants. So that's a, that's a pretty significant difference in terms of your return on investment. So that's what would cause me to describe this as the highest and best use of this property. In addition to the fact that there's upwards of $20 million in investment that'll be made in the, the bricks and mortar improvements on the site, and it'll look awfully darn nice at the gateway to our community. Anecdotally to that, the business community tells us over and over again that we have consultants and representatives who come here. We need somewhere for them to stay. They're looking for a place where they can use their National Rewards Program. That means Marriott, IHG, or Hilton. Hampton is a Hilton product. Whereas our other two hotels are not in those categories, and they kind of operate at a lower tier. So they're really not in the same category as a Hampton product, so it's not a direct compete. But the most comparable thing in the county is the next exit down. And that's where our businesses are currently sending their, their clients in. So that's leakage from our community. That's money that should be spent in Pickwa that's being spent elsewhere. So to be able to retain that and keep those folks in Pickwa, and then, oh, by the way, they can go spend their money in a restaurant in Pickwa and/or come downtown and spend money in a restaurant in Pickwa, that's all very good. And this is very, also very complimentary of the work being done at the Pickwa Center and the entertainment destination that they're creating. and the entertainment destination that they're creating, where folks may choose to come and enjoy a fun evening and stay overnight. So we're really excited to see this project moving forward. We're super supportive of the efforts, and we're doing everything we can to try to help bring this to fruition and realize the $18.6 million in return on investment year-over-year, let alone the $20 million in capital investment upfront, or the $51 million in economic impact that will happen during the construction period. So happy to add any additional information that might be useful.
And you mentioned before that the other companies around there have been informed in cooperation with you in that process, right? Like the gas station there and...
Yeah, the Speedway's actually been an important partner to the whole process because there's easements that are needed to be able to cross their property with ingress egress and utility pipes, and they've already secured, or the developers secured all those easement rights, and i.e. Speedway has signed off on all those. 7-Eleven actually owns Speedway now, so it's a young lady in Texas who we talked to, and she's been very helpful. So, yes, they are aware, and it's going to be good for them, right? So a convenience store, gas station right next to a hotel generally means you're going to get some additional patronage from the hotel occupants.
Chris, real quick, I think the project's excellent and something definitely needed in Pickwa. Real quick question, because of lessons learned in our past, is there any environmental concerns with the demolition of the structure? And are they being addressed, for instance asbestos and things like that? That probably is there. I don't know for a fact. Let's just expound on that just a little bit, considering you got the chance, and let's hear it right out.
I'm so glad you bring it up. I mean, you know, this has been a 12-month endeavor, if not longer. And for the hotel to be able to come to fruition, the first conversation from the real estate broker is, do you have a hotel study? So we did not. So we went and we engaged the consultant hotel and leisure advisors who put together the study for us that did the analysis of the market and said that if you put this product here with these other amenities, there is space in the market and it will perform successfully. In addition to that, there's all the other due diligence that goes into making sure that the developer understands what the site improvement's going to entail, what are the soil conditions, how does all that equate to the cost to ready the site? And prior to that, the demolition of the existing structure, which is the burden the city's going to bear, is part of a contribution to the project. And we know we have the estimates for the demolition costs, but whenever we have a demolition project, even if it's a house or, you know, a commercial building, the first step in that process is the asbestos or the environmental assessment. And for a city, it's the all-appropriate inquiry, which is another layer to that. But it tells us what liabilities exist there and what kind of abatement work will have to happen before the demolition can proceed. We know there's asbestos in the building, that's what the assessment told us, and that's been factored into the bid documents that we're putting out. And so, you know, that will be addressed before the building comes to the ground, as would it be with any other project that we do when it's demolition time.
Good answer.
Thanks.
I would just like to add something. I've heard people in the commission meeting say and ask the question, why is the city getting involved in things like this? And my understanding, and I'm pretty new to this, is the reason the city gets involved in something like this, like getting that land and helping these developers come in, is so we don't get, like our friends to the south, one of our cities to the south has a big ugly storage unit on their main entry.
Yeah.
I mean, because if that goes to sale to just anybody, it could become anything. So by the city getting involved and taking care of, you know, moving this along, correct me if I'm wrong, we get a really nice-looking hotel with a restaurant and then a fast-food restaurant, that's something that actually looks good there and functions well there instead of a storage unit.
You're exactly right, and there's really two prongs to the answer to that question. One is your zoning regulations will only take you so far. You know, the zoning designation of this property would accommodate perhaps a self-service storage unit, or a fuel plaza, or sectionally-oriented business, or, you know, a variety of other things that one would not want to see there. So with the city being involved and having a role in the ownership or the chain of title, it gives us the opportunity to execute a development agreement with the prospective developer and add a layer of additional restricted uses. So we said, we don't want a car wash, we don't want a fuel plaza, we don't want any of those things. If we're going to help you produce this redevelopment outcome that we all are striving for, it's going to be the highest and best use of the site. That's one reason. The other reason for our community and what is lost on some folks is, we don't get to pick necessarily what comes to your community or what lands on a particular property. The market drives that, right? And our market is not to the level yet where the development community will produce this outcome on their own without us having a role in the process and bringing the incentives necessary to help this project take place to the table. And so that's why the city has a role to play in a development project like this, and it's pretty common in virtually every other community, especially if you go to a community and say, why can't we have what they have? They're involved in development.
Troy's heavily involved.
They're using TIFs, they're using tax abatements, they're using all those tools that are at their disposal to produce the development outcomes that a community desires to see.
Yeah, I just wanted people to understand that, because we're not in the real estate business, but that's the reason we do what we do.
That's the reality of economic development and producing the outcomes that a community wants. And that's why you have a comp plan and strategic plan, so that we know what are we out there chasing and who are we trying to get to do the things that ultimately we want to have happen.
I think it looks great. Definitely better than a storage unit, so.
It's going to be a phenomenal improvement to that intersection.
Joe, I have an administrative question. So the applicant, my information is all jumbled. Isn't this Busiris Lodging, Inc.?
That's the name of their company, yes.
So the special use will go to Busiris Lodging, Inc.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I got one thing, Chris.
Yeah.
What about Scott Drive? Is it going to be realigned since entrance?
Glad you asked. So, I mean, this is going to be an incredible improvement, and we want it to be right. The geometry of that intersection is less than ideal. So we are prepared, as part of the conversations with the developer, you know, we're supporting the development of the property, but we're also going to make improvements to the Scott Drive intersection. I shall say it's our intent to make improvements to the Scott Drive intersection. So you have Scott Drive, and then you really have the two service drives that go to Cracker Barrel and to the Red Roof site. We're going to push the service drives back so it runs more parallel with Ash Street and makes it more of a T-intersection so that the traffic patterns make more sense, and there's an opportunity for everybody exiting to have an equal opening to be able to exit to the queue at the traffic signal. Whereas right now, it's kind of gives preference to the Cracker Barrel side.
Can we get a right-hand turn lane going into Scott Drive, perhaps?
That is a different project, because that is now unlimited access right-of-way, and you're dealing with ODOT's approval, and that's a five-year process, and we don't want to delay the project. They use the shoulder now, we know.
Yeah, yeah.
But there really is not enough right-hand traffic turns to warrant an exclusive right lane. We've looked at that. But just the behavior of motorists, they can't stand waiting for five seconds and then jump over there. But ultimately, you know, with this improvement, there's going to be additional traffic, and we'll have to reevaluate that, along with the signal timing. There may be some adjustments that need to be made to make sure everything flows smoothly.
Good question, yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
It's not moved.
Second.
We have motion and second on Resolution Number 7-24, where is Busiris Lodging Incorporated is requesting a special use for 902 Scott Drive, and where is the City of Pickwa Code provides the procedure for issuing a special use, and the Planning Commission has studied the request, conducted a public hearing on the matter, and has established as fact that the special use is compatible with the general economic development policies of the city, will not threaten the general health, safety, and welfare of the public or properties affected, and conforms to all other applicable plans, policies, and regulations of the city. At this time, could you poll the commissioners?
Cease.
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bub?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
Resolution Number PC 7-24 is approved. Now let's move on to Resolution Number PC 8-24.
A resolution for the Planning Commission to appoint a member to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Non-AM Cease.
Well, first, I think, yeah, that's, we need to see who's interested. Adam, you're interested?
Yeah.
No? Okay. We have an interested applicant, an interested commissioner. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
It's not moved.
And a second?
Second.
Where is Commissioner Cease has been nominated by the Planning Commission and agreed to serve in this capacity if appointed by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission member nominated has agreed to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals until the next appointment is made in the spring of 2025. I think it's only one year. Yeah, it's, year 2025. At this time, could you poll the commissioners?
Koenig?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Cease?
Aye.
Bub?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Resolution Number PC 8-24 is approved. Commissioner Cease is the representative on the Board of Zoning Appeals from the Planning Commission. Moving on to Resolution Number 9-24.
A resolution requesting a recommendation for the adoption of a new ordinance, Chapter 99, City of Pickwa Historic Preservation Ordinance.
I think we've all had an opportunity to read this ordinance. Could we have the staff report, please?
Good evening. I'm going to go through a quick PowerPoint just to kind of talk through the number of items that are within this. I am well aware it is a very comprehensive document, and so we're going to try to step through a couple of the reasons that we're here this evening. So Resolution 924 is a resolution creating a new ordinance, Chapter 99. It would be our Historic Preservation Ordinance. So this ordinance is necessary because the City of Pickwa is looking to become a certified local government, which is a funny term, but it is designated by the State Historic Preservation Office as a certified local government. There are certain categories that then create the ability to do different things under that state law, the main one being permitted to apply annually for grants. So to be able to be approved to be a CLG, you are obligated to have certain things. There's a checklist that they provide that gives you a guideline to follow. When our code Pickwa was done in June of 2023, there was some slight conversation about CLG in the hope that we could potentially use the existing language that we had to create enough of what SHPO was looking for to be able to meet the obligations. We took all of that and put it together in a checklist and sent it to SHPO, and they did not agree that we met all of the standards. So they felt that there were some needs that they saw from our ordinance, and they made it very clear. They also request a couple items that our ordinance very clearly did not touch on. So after that review, we went into how we could achieve getting certified as a local government, and that included creating this ordinance. So again, a couple of the items, just to call them out clearly, they prefer a standalone document, not living within the zoning code. They prefer a procedure that is very clear in how to designate local landmarks, which we did not have. They also prefer a separate commission, not the Planning Commission. That is only, their only purpose is to meet and determine these things that are of historical relevance to the city. And then there were a number of smaller items that dealt with how language was expressed in our code and the definitions that we used that they felt needed to be clarified. So just to give you an idea of some of the grants that are available, there are really two kind of pots of money that CLG enables us to go after. The first is that the actual CLG program itself has grants available. Most of them are 60/40. Annually, they pick priorities, and they give 100% of the project cost with no match to certain priorities. This year, oddly enough, it's very interesting, but they are looking at what they are calling "not old but old buildings," so buildings that were built in the 1900s are really what they're looking at. So there's a lot of beautiful buildings that were built in 1930 or 1950 that deserve to be preserved, and they are getting to their second life where people are saying, well, that building's just a 1950s building, let's bulldoze that. And so we will have no history of those buildings, even though maybe we don't all agree they're the most beautiful. There are certain ones that certainly are valuable to that time, and they should be preserved. So they do have some ability to have that conversation for people who have a building that was built in the '30s, '40s, '50s, even '20s that meets some of their obligations, you could potentially get 100% of the project cost. But the second piece of that is that it obligates, or it allows, excuse me, the city to designate properties to be on the local registry. So as everyone is likely aware, the state and the federal government have a historic registry. We have a number, which I'll get into here in a moment, of structures that are already in the historic register. But this project, or this program, would allow us to designate local landmarks that would also qualify as you would if you were to get the federal designation. And that allows you to be awarded, or allows you to go through the process to be awarded for Ohio Historic Preservation Tax Credits. And that program is very substantial. So if you can see up here, the last round, which was Round 31, Round 32 actually just closed in April, but Round 31, the last one that was actually given out, the state awarded 16 communities, 54 buildings, and $67 million in credit. So you can imagine the gap in funding that that covers when you are a building owner or a property owner who is trying to renovate a historic building. Those tax credits are integral in the conversation of how you build that capital stack to make sure that you're achieving the historic preservation and the current value that you need to get out of a building to make it, to be able to put the investment into that historic building that you would like to see. So again, that $67 million in tax credit were leveraged to $732 million in private investment. We would anticipate that once CLG is in place, that there are buildings in the city within the first round, so the next round is actually Round 33, which would end in August, or would, the deadline is in August. We would anticipate there would be buildings in the city if we can get this program in place that would apply for the Ohio Historic Preservation Tax Credit Program and hopefully leverage some funding to get them to invest in our community. So what other communities are CLG? Van Wert, Lima, Tip City, Dayton, Springboro. Tip City is the only one in Miami County, and they actually have been in the program for almost 20 years, a little over, I think they were 2004, so about 20 years. Dayton, Springboro, you see all those dots, there's a whole lot of different communities that have entered into the program for different reasons. Again, the majority of them look at how to preserve areas and how to leverage that preservation with funding. So that gets to why we need Chapter 99, which is the Pickwa Historical Preservation Ordinance. Again, it really does a couple of things for us. It creates a boundary, it redefines some of the boundaries. The Pickwa Caldwell Historic District, which I will refer to it as that, since I was told this evening that is the designated name, so I will make sure that I update everything to reflect that. But the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District is a already-defined district in the historical register, so that is not, the boundaries will not be changed by the city. Those boundaries, there's a much more extensive process in how to change the boundaries once you're already designated. But the Downtown Historic District, which is a different boundary, is not designated on the federal registry, and it can have its boundaries changed, and it would be formalized. So there has been conversation over the last couple of months about what, in our current code, is considered a historic overlay, and this would clarify and put into ordinance that the Downtown Historic District has a boundary, and it would define those. The second piece is that it provides the process, as I noted, to put local landmarks on our local registry, so that would allow a property owner, whether in the boundaries or outside, to ask and come before the board, the the City Historic Review Commission, and request adoption or the landmark status, which would then, again, once they are approved for that, would allow them to apply for different grants in the state of Ohio and federally. Third, it would create the body that is required to approve this. So, that would be this City Historic Review Commission, CHRC, who would be established to do two things. They would be the body that approves the landmark designations, as well as certificates of appropriateness for things in the historic district boundaries or for properties who are designated as landmarks. And then, this ordinance also incorporates language that is currently in code Pickwa, so it would remove the existing, some of the existing language that we're going to talk about in the next case, or in two cases, to cover all the requirements of the State Historic Preservation Office. So, I'm not going to go through each section of this code, but there are a number of them. This is clearly framed, or it is a framework that is provided by SHPO. But again, it covers all of the creation, the purpose, the definitions, boundaries, what the process is. It also has very specific things that are called out by SHPO that are now in there, which is the alternative equivalent compliance and the historical significance process. And those two are important because in today's world, not many people really want to have single pane glass. And so, this allows the board to interpret what is being requested and give an alternative equivalent. So, if it looks exactly like what it's supposed to, even though it may be more energy efficient, or newer, or whatever it is, it can still be approved by the board. And then the historical significance component is really the exemption piece. So, if you're in the boundaries and your structure is not historically significant, you can request the exemption and therefore not have to meet all of the standards for a historical building. If your building was built in two thousand and ten and you decide that you want to put on shutters, it's a lot different conversation than if you'd like to paint a historical building that's in our downtown. So, there's a, a different level, and that provides a process, a transparent process for people to be able to make those determinations. And then it also transparently notes the decision-making process and criteria for approval. And then it gives enforcement and penalties for all of the people who decide they are not interested in following these rules. So, again, there's a, a checklist that is provided. We have the checklist from SHPO. We believe now that with this ordinance, we meet all the sections that are required. We have actually sent our draft to SHPO for review. We have not heard back, but we do believe, after all of the conversations we've had, that this ordinance, the way it is drafted, will meet the obligations set forth by SHPO to allow the City of Pickwa to move forward and be registered as a certified local government. So, again, the boundaries, which is really hard to see on this, you, the blue is the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District, and the yellow is downtown. The next conversation to have is, is where those boundaries, you know, what we add to them. This is a living,
breathing document, so there is the ability to change this over time. But if you look,
there are certain areas where you would try to create a Western boundary, potentially on Roosevelt, move the, some of those structures are maybe not historically relevant from the eighteen hundreds, but they are likely relevant from the nineteen hundreds. So, there's certainly some architecture there that potentially should be saved. Any, any area that we would add, would, we would notice all of the properties and make sure that they're aware. So, that would also add the little exemption that was given to Pickwa Battery at the corner of Wood and Main. And I would say, again, some of these being added in is not because the existing structure is historically significant, but it's because if somebody were to build back and they were to build a structure, we would want to make sure that they are also meeting whatever requirements are met in their surrounding area. So, then on the Eastern Boundary, you would also note, you know, potentially you would go to Spring Street and extend the Northern Boundary to Green Street, so you could incorporate those buildings that face as our entrance to downtown. And that would include the future Artisan Alley Project, which comes across from water. As I noted, the historic places that we have currently, we have four structures within the City of Pickwa, and we have one historic district. So, the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District, the Zollinger Building, the high school, the old high school, Ariston, and then Fort Pickwa Plaza. Those are the ones that are on the National Register of Historic Places formally today. And that states the dates that they were put in. Interestingly enough, it seems that we were, we were, we, we made a big effort in the seventies and eighties to get buildings on the register, and we kind of have fallen off in more recent times with the Zollinger Building in two thousand and fifteen as our latest, most recent building put on the register. We certainly have buildings that could be added. And I, what I will note, just because this is important, no one is obligated to request landmark status. So, if somebody decides they don't want to, to be a landmark, they are not obligated. It's the property owner's discretion. That is all I have for PC nine twenty-four. Again, I will note that that kind of goes along with PC ten and PC eleven, which are coming before you.
Sure.
With that, I'd answer any questions you may have.
Can you explain the difference you did to me, but explain the difference for the Pickwa Caldwell Historic Association?
Yeah, so, if there is a, a body that is a nonprofit that serves as representation for a district, it is a third-party nonprofit. It is not the city. And so, the designation of that nonprofit is their determination. The city still holds all rights and regulation powers. Now, it's like an HOA, right? So, if you have an HOA, you are obligated to meet the HOA requirements, but the city will not uphold your HOA requirements. We uphold the regulations that we have that govern your property.
I thought that might be kind of confusing that there's another organization out there.
Yeah, and a lot of historic districts, particularly the ones that are in CLG, also have friends of or different bodies that exist that are, are really, they're the lifeblood of these districts because they're the ones that raise money. They're the ones that really feel the historic value of it. And it's certainly, they have a place in this conversation to have further, you know, when they want changes or they want the boundaries to change, really they're the body that is going to probably push the city to make those changes. But the city is still the register, the city is still obligated by federal and state law to be the body that manages the regulatory framework of that area.
In the downtown area, it's flexible enough that you can expand or rece, receive any time you want, right?
Expand or receive what?
The, the map.
Sure. Yeah, so again, the advantage that the process sets out now is for the downtown district, because it is not a historic, it's not registered on the historic register, it would be a process that goes through our local board. Again, the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District, the defined boundary was actually adopted in eighty-five, and to change that, there's a different process that would not come before the city because it is a federal, federally registered district.
But you mentioned that you could expand the area now in the downtown area, but that doesn't remain in concrete then. You're still flexible with that after you?
Correct. And we are hopeful as, the goal of this process is to create the framework and put it in place and make sure that we have a structure that the State Historic Preservation Office understands and agrees, that we are trying to create an opportunity for us to meet some of these historic preservation efforts. And once we create that, I, I'm certain there will be a need annually or quarterly, or whatever it is, to have a conversation about what's working, what's not working, maybe that there's a building or a property owner that wants to be added, you know, or somebody that says, you know what, this isn't for me. I really want to get out of this. Is there a way to do that? I'm sure those conversations will come forward. The effort that we have now is to really define a boundary, to set some structure in place, and then in the future, we can continue to have those conversations as they come up.
And as I understand it, there's not a grants person right now for the city, in the city employment, but who will operate these grants? Who will initiate them?
Well, so, you know, again, the property owner is going to, I mean, they're going to have the owner, they're going to be the body, the person that applies. The city will not be applying for non-city-owned grants for these buildings unless the owner asks the city to be involved in that process. So, traditionally, what you'd see is if a building owner wants to do this, the city would work with them, designate them as a landmark, or they would be within that, and they just then have the ability, because of their designation, to go through that application process. The city is certainly more knowledgeable in those processes, and if somebody said, you know, we really want to go through this, we most certainly would have our staff help them, and we would achieve that. But you are correct, we don't have an individual right now who is only looking for grants. Our department is certainly looking to continue to evolve, but right now, that position does not exist.
So, the, does it say as the standards that the Secretary of Interior Standards for Treatment of Historic Properties with Guidelines for Preserving, Rehabilitating, Restoring, Reconstructing Historic Buildings are the standards for each of these landmarks?
Yeah, so, there is-
So, and, and I think it's important that people understand if they're applying for the grant, that the, the substance and essence of their project must be in line with preservation standards.
Absolutely.
You're not going to paint a masonry structure. Okay.
Potentially not.
There we go. Okay. That's because this Secretary of Interior not recommend?
Right.
There's a whole number of, but it's really clear if you read the standards and what would be within the scope and where, you know, what would be a complimentary, a structure, a project eligible for significant grants.
Right. And our goal is to make that as simple as possible for our residents and business owners. So, we're going to create cheat sheets. We're going to create kind of did you knows to make that process a little simpler. So, you can say, hey, these are the items that you're going to have to meet, be aware, or if you're, as long as you're on-
Or just read the standard. It's really straightforward.
I don't disagree. You understand those standards. Some people don't get them. They don't understand it. So, if we can make it simpler for them, we certainly want to do so.
Very good. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes, any, anyone in the audience would like to speak in regards to resolution number PC nine dash twenty-four, please state your name and your address.
Melanie Walker, five-two-six North Wayne. We have a home in the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District, but we also have two businesses that are also in the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District. And I know that it was hard for y'all to see, but like, in the downtown businesses, it goes all the way down to referees. Correct me, I don't think your building is in the district. You are in the district. Okay, because you're that little cutoff area, so I wasn't sure about that. So, I was here last night, heard about this. I think it's amazing. I know anytime you do home repair, it's expensive, but when you do home repair on the historic buildings, it is over the top. We have a secondary building that needs to have a roof replaced. It's got bricks coming up on both sides, and because the one side's pulling away, we're looking at sixty-five thousand dollars on a little building to have repair. So, you know, anything like this that could help us, I think would be, you know, great. One of my questions was that there are tax credits and there's grants, both. Is that correct?
Correct. They're two separate programs.
They're two separate things. Okay. But it's all through the same system?
By having the CLG offer-
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure of that. And you had, I think you addressed this, that the board will not be making any recommendations as to properties or people that should be getting grants, that the, the individuals just apply for it themselves.
Correct. We would not be the body that, the city would not be giving any of it. Now, it could grow. I'm not going to say that they're, the city-
At this time.
-make a decision and say, we're going to create a pool of money for people. I'm not saying that would never happen, but as of now, there's no anticipation that the city is not the body that's going to give anyone funding.
Yeah, but anything done to the, I don't know if this is where you're going, but if any features would be addressing the exterior of the structures, they would require a certificate of appropriateness from this body. That's not an endorsement or a recommendation, but at some point in the grant process, where they get the grant and then go for the certificate, or do they get the certificate and go for the grant? Not defined.
Right. I would say that if, what I would suggest to somebody is that they go through our process, get approval, and then ask.
Then ask, because that's an endorsement.
Right. It's another feather in their cap. This is a competitive process. There's other communities, there's other buildings in the, you know, area, in the state, in the, the country, that are all trying to do this. So, the more competitive you can be, the better.
And the Historical Commission, check. They agree. Yeah, I think it would be good. It would help.
Well, and I am on the Caldwell Board. So, and Don Smith, who is the president of the association, him and I spoke with a couple other people this morning, and so we had discussed a little bit of what was going on. So, some of it was, you know, addressed tonight. So, when we talked about some extensions, like we would like to, and the question was, is we don't know why it was never included, was on Broadway, which backs up to the official district now, that we would like to see that area added because those homes are part of that, that look. So, as a matter of fact, this year on the home tour, we had a house from there that was on the tour. So, we called it a bonus house. So, we would like to be involved with saying, you know, these are some areas that we would like to see added. We do know that the process to go through to get things added to our area through the historic registry, because that was set back originally, and you have to have pictures, and you have to have history and everything. And yes, the Caldwell-
Very complicated. It's a lot of effort, but it's very valuable to have that information.
Yes, because we're the only one around here. There's no one else around that has all the different architecture that we have in our district. You know, a lot of them will have, you know, Queen Anne, but they don't have all the different ones like we have. So, the other thing that we discussed is that we would like to see it as one district, not the business district and not the Pickwa Caldwell District, because like my business is in the Pickwa Caldwell District. You know, we'd like to see both of those two come together. And I know it would be a lot of work, but that's what, you know, we would like to see to be one, you know, one historic district.
Yeah, as I read this, that's well within the scope of the Historical Commission, once appointed.
I would say that if that was the effort, that would be a secondary effort after the fact that this was created, then the, the federal boundary changes would be a steeper climb.
Right. The local ones could be done by the commission.
We could have it in place, and then we could start making that climb at, together as, you know.
Put it all as one entity instead of it being two separate things.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that's all I had.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Melanie. For looking into it.
Good.
One, one, one thing to note that, that I will throw out there, and it's not intended one way or the other, but depending on political powers that be, some of these are available for cost savings that can, can be, can be taken. So, so, it's not always that, that there's money available or there's, I think the tax credits are always available, but it's not always that there's-
Right.
-grant monies available, depending on who's politically in charge. So-
And you can apply for it, but it doesn't mean that you-
Well, sometimes they're just, it's gone.
Right.
You know, they emptied it. So, vote carefully.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anyone else present want to speak in regards to resolution number PC nine dash twenty-four? Any further discussion among the commissioners? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second on PC, resolution number PC nine dash twenty-four. The, an amendment has been proposed to adopt Chapter ninety-nine, City of Pickwa Historic Preservation, to the Court of Ordinances as shown in Exhibit A attached. And whereas the Planning Commission has studied the request, conducted a public hearing on the matter, and has established findings that indicate the proposed code amendment will not threaten the general health, safety, and welfare of the community and conforms to all other applicable plans and policies of the city. This time, could you poll the commission?
Bub?
Aye.
Sees?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Resolution number PC nine dash twenty-four is approved. Let's move to resolution number PC ten dash twenty-four.
A resolution requesting a recommendation for a-
A resolution requesting a recommendation for amendments to Chapter thirty-two, Boards and Commissions.
Evening again. Uh, I will, I will go through, um, again, PC ten kind of follows PC nine. This is the changes that are necessary to create the separate commission. But it also does another item, and? When we made the changes in June of twenty twenty-three to Code Pickwa? One of the changes that we, uh, we made and we missed? Was the actual creation of the Board of Zoning Appeals. The language, the authorizing language, uh, lived in the zoning code and not in our codes, our ordinances. So this will also formally adopt the BZA, uh, within the, it will establish it as we have the Planning Commission? Establish it as we have all the other boards and commissions that we have. Uh, so it will add the BZA, and it will add the City Historic Review Commission? To Chapter thirty-two, Boards and Commissions. The language for the BZA that is proposed is the exact language that used to exist. It just no longer exists in that form in Code Pickwa. So, Code Pickwa, we'll get to the next piece when we change to our development code. And we'll note that we are now referencing this section, uh, which is the establishment section for the board? As we've done in all our other boards, uh, and it just cleans up where that is. So, again, the, the BZA language, it's five members, they reside in the city. They, they are appointed by the City Commission, one member of the Planning Commission is a member, uh, everything is the same as it, as it was. Um, there's a chair and a vice chair, three members as a quorum. Uh, and again, they have jurisdiction over certain things, those powers are designated under our, our, our code. Then the second piece is the City Historic Review Commission, again, it creates a board. After talking with the City Commission last night, uh, they felt that there needed to be a, an ex officio? Non-voting member that was from the City Commission on it. So, there will be five, uh, uh, community members, and then one? City Commission member that would be a non-voting ex officio member. But with that said, uh, again, it would be a five-year appointment, except for that ex officio, which would be a one-year. And then, to the extent, they would have certain fields of, of expertise. So this is where SHPO, uh, the State Historic Preservation Office? Would prefer that there be people on this board that have architecture, architectural history? History, archaeology, planning, or related disciplines on that board?
Quick question.
Yes.
Could we appoint Brad from the Planning Commission to be on it? Think that's our, our expert?
Quick here, the board doesn't exist yet, but yes, if you so chose, I think that would be absolutely appropriate, yes.
Like how with the BZA, we had a Planning Commission member, so have a Planning Commission member represent-
So, I mean, we could put that as well, it's not in here, we could certainly modify that. If you want to make that as a, as a, a change to your recommendation to the City Commission, we could certainly look at? There being six members, one of which is designated by the Planning Commission, I think that's absolutely appropriate.
I, I think it'd be good to not only have somebody with the experience, but also from the Planning Commission? There, there's got to be cross-talk a little bit of-
Well, and that's the advantage, you know, obviously, that's why the BZA does the, the appointment as well, is the hope is that that person can come back with the experience of sitting on the other board? And have that conversation and say, I was there, this is what happened, um, and they can speak to that knowledge. So I, I certainly think that's appropriate, I mean, if that's a recommendation that, uh, the Planning Commission has? I'd just ask that you make that clear in your, in your recommendation to City Commission, um, and we're more than happy to make that change.
So one of the five voting members can be from the-
Would be appointed by the Planning Commission.
That's a good idea.
Absolutely.
Not ex officio?
No, correct, they, we need five members that are voting, so the planning, and just like at the BZA, we have? Ex officio members on the BZA, like, like our, our city planner. But they're, they don't vote, they just start, they go, you know, I mean, he's our staff for it.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, now, do we need to?
Amend it?
Amend it, or just, uh?
Yes, I would ask, I would ask that, this is a recommendation to the City Commission to approve? Uh, if that's the decision you make, uh, then I would just ask that you make a, a motion to amend per your? And then your recommendation to approve as amended.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anyone else present want to speak for or against Resolution Number PC ten dash twenty-four? Okay.
I think if you're going to appoint someone from the, from the Commission already, there should be a non-voting person on that board. I think the, the five people, the way it's structured in the community should be the five people that vote. The two from, one from this board and one, this Commission, and one from the other Commission should be non-voting.
Why is that?
Because the way this is set up is, we want people from the community to have input? And not have someone riding over them from other Commissions, it's already, has another vote twice.
I think our BZA member votes, don't they?
Yeah, he's a voting member.
People, we assign usually votes, now, not City Commission, but our board usually does.
I'm just saying, I just, I just think that, you know, it needs to be someone from here that has input? You know, experienced to say, hey, this is not going to pass, this is going to pass. So I don't think that person should be voting member of the board, in my opinion.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? I, um-
I guess my only question is, who decides this, what, what, what this new CHRC does? Who decides that kind of stuff now? Is that us?
No, this is, this is a recommendation to the City Commission.
But what does-
Does it now?
Yeah, who does the, what, these kind of things, this historical thing?
The Planning Commission does it now.
Okay.
But they're going to establish, so it actually clears our plate of historical, it goes back to the way it was when we had? A downtown development, I mean, a, uh? Yeah, we had another group-
We had a downtown design review board.
I guess my only point to this is, and, and not to disagree with him, because I agree, I think the community should be able to have more input. But I know with the Board of Zoning Appeals up until here recently, they've had problems, you know, making, having enough people show up.
Quorum.
And I think that's the reason that maybe, you know, we know Mr. Bup will show up, because he's already on the Planning Commission, so that gives that extra person to-
Plus his knowledge.
Yeah, plus, yeah.
Well, I, I'm the only one left that was on the downtown design review board too, so I've been doing this for a long time. And, uh? And I have Historic Preservation Focus and Master in Architecture, so I think it's, it's? I still can't, I still can't vote the whole board, I still have to have three members.
Yeah, you could still be overruled by the others.
So it isn't like it's a, it's a, uh? You know? Writing herd over anybody, you still only get one vote, so.
We, you know, when, when they had the downtown design review board, we didn't have a member from the Planning Commission.
On that.
On that, it was, and they, they operated effectively, I mean, there was no? Now, there was no reason that we, as a Planning Commission, we couldn't go to the meeting? And suggest, we just were not compelled to make the meetings. And so it's, it took more off our, off our plate.
Since at the end of the day, it's not our decision, it's the-
City Commission.
Commission's decision.
But we could, yeah, the City Commission? Was, was, as I understood you saying, they wanted five citizens and an ex officio member from the City Commission.
Correct.
And-
What I guess I would note to you is, there's no obligation that says that you, as a Planning Commission member, couldn't also be appointed to a separate board.
That's true.
So the Planning Commission may not appoint this person, but if, if you were interested and the City Commission appointed you, you would be appointed by the City Commission. So, what I would say again, just to be clear to everyone, the Planning Commission would no longer have any say. Right, so you wouldn't get two says, you would have one, I mean, you would only be-
We would be taken, the Planning Commission would be taken all the way out of all that.
Correct, and so, but your, your position as the representative to that board, you still would only get one say, you wouldn't get two? Because the Planning Commission has no say over what the-
I guess hopefully, my point is, some citizens are listening to this, think this is streamed on YouTube between now and next Tuesday? Maybe some people could come up, make their suggestions at the next Commission meeting, because I'm not totally, I, I want people to have a voice. That was the whole reason I joined this board, so, I, I appreciate you coming up, I always respected you and your wife, so? Uh, you know, if anyone hears this, come to the next Commission meeting and give your opinion on it before they vote.
I, I think the, the idea that the? The, right now, we appoint to the Board of Zoning Appeals? The way this is written, the City Commission would appoint all five members. And they could choose, as you stated, choose a member of the Planning Commission who could apply to be on the City, uh, the Historical Commission. I don't know why, we just don't leave it that way personally, because you could still participate? You would just have to be appointed by the City Commission. Okay, so, uh?
I am a citizen.
So there is no, if we, if we're kind of in concert that that's agreeable, then, uh?
We can just stay out of it altogether, yeah.
Right, yeah, we could, we could stay out, well, yeah, but we still want to, we're still citizens and interested in Pickwa and the future.
Oh, sure, I just mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be appointing anybody.
Right, and, but, you know, there, we wouldn't be doing it. Commissioner Cease could say, I want to be on the Historical Commission.
I don't know that much about historical buildings, but-
I, I think it's important, but, uh? But I think when you get involved with the certified local government, there's a lot of training, it's really an uptick? In the, in your knowledge base on this. Okay, so, any further discussion? So, at this point, I'm not hearing we need an amendment.
Yeah, just-
I just said we do it as is.
Okay, do, so, uh?
I'll make a motion to approve PC ten dash twenty-four as is.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number PC ten dash twenty-four? Whereas an amendment has been proposed to amend? Chapter thirty-two, Boards and Commissions to the Court of Ordinances as shown in Exhibit B? And whereas the Planning Commission has studied the request? Conducted a public hearing on the matter? And has established findings that indicate the proposed code amendment? Will not threaten the general health, safety, and welfare of the community? And conforms to all applicable plans and policies of the city? This time, could you pull the Commissioners? Cease?
Aye.
Bup?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Uh, peace, Resolution Number PC ten dash twenty-four is approved. Now, the final resolution, it's also related to this.
So, Resolution PC eleven dash twenty-four, I believe the agenda states twelve? Is a resolution requesting a recommendation for amendments to Title fifteen, the Development Code.
Good evening, three times a charm.
Okay.
All right, so Resolution? Uh, Resolution, or Resolution PC eleven twenty-four is a resolution, this is where we're changing our development code? To accommodate the changes that we are proposing in the other two, uh, resolutions. So, this is an extensive list, I will say, uh, as you are all aware, the, um? Planning Commission has not modified our code very much in the last year, as we have a new code. We have found there are quite a number of, of places where, um, we are working in the community that we need to? Make some, some changes to our code, so? This is kind of a menagerie of all of those changes, and I know it seems like a lot, but I'll go through each one kind of quickly. If you have questions, please let me know, but? The majority of these, uh, reference the, either certificate of appropriateness? Or something to do with the historic nature, uh, that currently is being designated to a different body than the new body that we are creating. So, the first piece is modifying the primary use table. This deals with self-storage, deals with data centers, this is just an issue that we have. Three six, three A one, um, that is correcting an error, if you look in there, there's an unfinished sentence. Three six nine, uh, is the data center designation, so that creates an actual, uh, definition of a data center, which we do not have. Modifying, uh, four seven ten, uh, deals with the historic district overlay signage. So that is again, changing how that is authorized, so? Murals within the downtown zoning districts will still get approval from the Planning Commission? For color palette, um, they will not go to, um? To the new board, uh, so that clarifies that.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Why?
Because murals, uh, although, what, what we, I guess what we determined is that murals are not generally, um, considered whether they are historic or not. You are not looking at whether the mural is historic, you are looking at whether or not it is appropriate in the downtown district. So the historic nature of it isn't quite the same, if, if you feel that it is more, um, necessary from the historic nature? Then we can certainly modify that to, um, keep language that allows it to just be transferred instead of going to the Planning Commission? As we've done with all the others to, um, to the new board.
Well, uh, does, doesn't? Is that same thing, uh? When you say downtown zoning district, are you talking about the? The downtown, uh, that we just established?
No, no, this would just be one of the zoning districts that are, we have a number of districts that are downtown zoning districts, so-
Be in and above the historic downtown?
The previous language referenced HLO, which is our historic landmark overlay, and that no longer will exist. So, the language needed to be changed to be clarifying as to who and, and what would require review.
Is this that same designated area that we have shown right now?
No, so this would just be downtown districts, and I, I apologize, I don't know the? Do you know that, that, exactly which districts those are?
Be the, uh, DSX and the D, something X, it's shopfront, and then the other one is the downtown.
Yeah, so this would be the zoning designations, not the historical overlay, so it is a different boundary. And it would be dependent upon the individual parcel, not on a boundary line.
I don't know, do you guys think? That should be the new board's? Responsibility, or do you think it should be ours?
I think that should be in the Planning Commission.
Why is that?
Because it's just a zoning area.
Yeah, but do you want to be looking at color palettes? And things like that, whereas we got out of all that before.
Yeah, I think, well, no, I thought, okay, the other way, the new board takes that, yeah.
That's what, and that's what this is saying, basically is? But it's beyond the historic district though.
We're, yeah, and we're looking at it as a sign. I mean, that's really what this is changing it to, is we're looking at a mural as a sign, and then we're defining it as such, and therefore? You know, it is a special sign, and so you will approve the special sign, but it is not? It is not a historical sign, personally.
In that it's a mural? And it says signs? There's not going to be any confusion about? The sign restrictions in the designated historic areas?
I, what I would say is, this is certainly just one of the many, if you are uncomfortable with this, let us, um? Let's, let's cut that out for now, and let us? Kind of stew that one over, and if there's a better way to do it? We certainly can come up with language that is more, um? You know, it incorporates all of the district without potentially making the Planning Commission be the designated body. I just want to make sure that it is not living in the signage side if we're going to do that? Because it needs to be a separate thing out of signage if the Planning Commission isn't going to be involved.
I think so too, I think, I think, I think, uh? It needs, it almost needs its own-
Classification.
Mural, you know?
So maybe then I would ask that if, if you're going to recommend approval that we modify, or we remove, uh, four seven ten for consideration?
I don't want to be the only one, I mean, what do you-
No, I agree.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit.
Understood.
Does that make sense? I mean, I don't want to be a pooper in anybody's parade here.
No, and again, what I would say is, I mean, this is really our, our first effort to try to rectify some of these changes, and so? There's ones that we'll certainly, we'll get right, and there's some that we need to do better on, and so we'll take that one back and make sure that? As we're looking at other changes, that we incorporate that.
Okay. So do we need to make a motion when we do the? We'll make a motion to move four seven ten?
That one as part of the, yeah.
Sounds good.
All right, so the next one then is seven one one, which is a, it? Contemplates Historic Preservation Certificates of Appropriateness, so that will be removed from, uh, our code? Because again, it will go to this new board. Seven one two, uh, defines what Development Director is, we do not have a actual position of Development Director. So it defines it as the Community Services Direct Department? Or other titled department that has management authority over the Planning and Zoning Division? Uh, so if the Planning and Zoning Division gets moved again, um, we don't, uh, have to go back and redefine who that person is. Seven one three, uh, again, that is the piece that defines the- Seven-one-three, uh, again, that is the piece that defines the BZA, so it notes the establishment of the BZA under Chapter thirty-two, which we just talked about. Seven-one-four removes historic preservation, um, from one of your tasks as the Planning Commission, um, entirely, moves it on to the other board. Seven-two-three, uh, is the special use permit section, and so it notes that certificates of appropriateness will be approved from the City Historic Review Commission, Chapter ninety-nine. Uh, seven-two-five is the development permit section, and it notes flexibility, or it adds flexibility to that portion. Uh, we continually are seeing, uh, that the code is a wonderful document, uh, but some of the rigidity that is in that code, uh, has been challenging, so this, um, puts a little more flexibility into that. So currently, uh, we allow adjustment up to fifteen percent to any standard. What we are allowing is some flexibility in that, to say that if that standard is to change more than fifteen percent, another standard would need to be improved by an equal or greater amount. So again, the goal of that would be to try to work with someone to say, you know, if you want to, um, have fifteen percent less trees, then you're going to have fifteen percent more of some other standard to offset the screening or something of that nature. Again, it gives just a little bit more flexibility to allow us to work through things without having to make them go get a BZA variance, uh, for every little thing that, that, um, they want to do on a site. Seven-two-ten is the certificate of appropriateness, so that would remove the entire section and replace it with a line that just says, um, COAs are approved by the City Historic Preservation Commission. Or, excuse me, the city, yeah, City Historic, uh, Review Commission, I want to make sure I get that right. Section seven-four, uh, it deals with zoning verification letters, so this one is not a huge one, but it is a, um, one that we deal with internally, where there are people who apply for, um, a million zoning verification letters, and this would increase our costs to thirty dollars, which we are allowed to do. Uh, and so, again, our goal with that is, it's a lot of banks who are asking for a lot of information, and it requires our staff to spend a whole lot of time doing it, uh, and so all we're doing is asking to increase that from ten dollars to thirty dollars.
Why is City Historic Preservation Commission?
That, uh, I, that.
Acronym CHRC.
Correct, that, uh, as I noted, I would ask that we make sure that is clear, that it's a City Historic Review Commission, I apologize for the.
So it's not the City Historic Preservation?
No, it's CHRC, City Historic Review Commission.
Yeah, I was trying to figure that out too.
We need to change that on.
That's in seven-ten, or seven-two-ten, under certificate of appropriateness.
Right.
On seven-one-two-one, uh, to review and decide on applications for development and sign permits, I would say, add to that, instead of just sign permits, sign permits outside designated historical areas. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So that we're not.
Overlapping.
Overlapping in that, the differences between the Planning Commission and the, uh, help me. CHRC is very clear.
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and I think upfront, being as clear as we can is important, because we don't want people jumping through hoops and trying to figure out what, what they're doing.
Awesome.
Did you write that down, Chad?
Seven-point-one-two-one. Signs outside historic areas.
Development and sign permits outside of historical, perfect.
Apologize, my voice is just.
Yeah, it's that time of night, I understand.
Time for dinner.
It's been time for dinner. If there are no other questions, then me, that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Let's, let's say, Mr. Chairman, we approve this with the changes stated, and we don't have to repeat all those. Would that work?
And we'll make sure we reflect that broadly here.
Yeah.
I mean, we got them recorded, so.
We got them recorded, you can go back through, because you have to change, remove four-point-seven-point-ten, and you have to remove any reference to City Historic Preservation Commission to City Historic Review Commission.
And the various little, little other things.
And all the other things we discussed, and so we need to do all that.
And just so I'm clear, it's, it's not removing, um, no, no, you're correct, it's, four-seven-ten is the one that we are removing for now, yeah, yeah, okay.
So I'll make that motion to approve it with?
All those edits.
All those edits.
Administrative edits. Any second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Whereas an amendment has been proposed to amend Title fifteen, Development Code, to the Code of Pickwa as shown in Exhibit C attached. And whereas the Planning Commission has studied the request, conducted a public hearing on the matter, and has established findings that indicate the proposed code amendment will not threaten the general health, safety and welfare of the community and conforms to all other applicable plans and policies of the city. This time, could you poll the commissioners? Bup?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
Cease?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number PC eleven dash twenty-four is approved. At that's the end of our new business, is there any other business prior to adjournment?
I just wanted to apologize, I, um, I deal with the Scott Drive development for months now, I go in front of a lot of different people and talk about it, and for me to assume that you had already seen it in its entirety, I just completely overlooked that. I, I know we brought it here before, but I didn't remember to what extent, but I, I know the plans were included, but I could have done a better job explaining it.
Ah, forgiven.
Okay, any other comments?
Please, whoever's seasoned, thank Mr. Patel for considering us, and Mr. Smeesing, and, and you guys for working through all this. That's a great development, that could really be nice for Pickwa. So we sincerely, as a planning commission, not only approve, but appreciate, so.
And I would just mention, if the, see, correct me on this, right, CHRC? Uh, goes through, that I think Melanie or her husband should consider, uh, applying to be on it.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, and we have a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All in favor, ring the dinner bell.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.